Regular Evolus City Council Meeting scheduled for 5:00 PM April 20th will now come to order. Roll call.
Counsel Lillis.
Here.
Counsel Purpich.
Here.
Counsel Rousey.
Here.
Counsel Coivinon.
Here.
Mayor Rossell.
Here.
Approval of minutes, City Council Workshop, March 24th. Approval of minutes, City Council Special Meeting, March 29th. An approval of minutes, City Council Meeting, April 6th. Anybody have any question or changes? Call for a motion that we approve these minutes. Motion made by Purpich, you have a support?
Support.
Word by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number D, Approval of Tonight's Agenda. We have any additions or changes? And Brian, you had a couple of things you wanted to add?
Yes, Mayor, I'm hoping that the council would consider two items, first of which is to discuss janitorial services going forward for city buildings. And second, to address the, or discuss the reopening of city buildings to the public.
I will label these as items 11 and 12. If no one has any questions, a call for a motion that we approve tonight's agenda with these additions. Motion made by Coivinon, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. No appointments or presentations, we have no one from the audience wants to address the council at this time. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of payroll, March 16th through the 31st, and approval of payroll, March 1st through, April 1st through the 15th. If no one has any questions, a call for a motion that we approve these two items?
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, we have a support?
Support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. No public hearings tonight, we have no unfinished business. And we'll move on to items and new business. Item J1, Recommendation to Hire Deputy Police Chief. Chief, I see you have a recommendation, you and the Public Safety Committee to appoint Brian Ness.
Yes, sir.
If no one has any questions, I'll call for a motion that we take your recommendation of the Public Safety Committee and Police Chief to promote Brian Ness to the position of Deputy Police Chief.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Lillis, we have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Coivinon, any further discussion?
Just want to say that it was a privilege to, to interview all four candidates. Top-notch people that we have working for us and, you know, a very tough decision to make as to who to advance and, and so forth. So, congratulations to all four of them, I think they did an outstanding job. They continue to do an outstanding job for us every day.
You know, we're fortunate to have so many qualified individuals in the department that we can fill these positions from within. You know, that's...
Yes, we are.
That's tough when you have to go on the outside. Look, but we got plenty of talent here. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item J2, Recommendation for Deputy Chief Ness Compensation Package. And that is basically with the bargaining unit agreement? How we're doing this?
Yeah, he's changing bargaining units.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Was with LALS, he'll be going with the United Steelworkers. And essentially, all this is a, is a technical proceeding to make sure that he gets the entitlements that he's allowed under the new contract.
I forgot there's a different bargain, two bargaining units there. If no one has any questions, a call for a motion that we take the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee and Police Chief with this compensation package adjustment?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Rousey, we have a support?
Support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number three, Recommendation to Hire Patrol Officer. Dustin Adam Huta? And that should take our numbers up chief to where we're thinking?
Okay.
Like to call for a motion that we take the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee and Police Chief to hire Dustin Adam Huta as a full-time patrol officer for the city of Evolus.
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, we have a support?
Support.
Support by Coivinon, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number four, Authorized Promotion of Police Officer to Sergeant. We have to go through the application and interview process then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Call for a motion that we approve this process, promoting a patrol officer to sergeant?
So moved.
Motion made by Coivinon, do I have a support?
Support.
Or by Lillis? We have two openings for sergeant, we gonna fill both? Think or?
Well, we're hoping to, I think the, years ago, the prevailing thought behind having sergeant's position was so that each crew could have a ranking officer on staff. So, since we've had three for, well, my memory serves me at least 25 years or thereabouts, or more, I'm, I guess from my view, I'm hoping that council would allow us to go ahead and fill the vacant position. You know, we were, we vacated a position last fall, November, December, I think it was. And that, that position has been vacant, and now with Sergeant Ness's promotion, that'll be the second position. So, we're hoping the council will approve posting for the, both vacancies. We can do both at the same time, so.
Well, I would, I would like to see that happen.
Well, then you would have, we have four shifts. So we would have a deputy chief, a chief, and two sergeants.
Three.
Three sergeants.
Three.
Okay.
As it has been for many years.
And that would be?
We got rid of the lieutenant's position, didn't we? We had deputy chief.
We got rid of the lieutenant's position because we...
We, we didn't really get rid of it. It's still a part of the contract, it's just that the council has not opted to fill that position since...
I think we went because of the deputy chief.
Yeah.
I got a question for Chief. Chief, do you need to be sergeant? Good enough for me?
Yep.
Well, I mean...
Good enough for me, you're the guy that should know.
Yep.
You know what I mean, it's, you know, there's not a lot of movement in a small department. So if you get an opportunity to...
The numbers, no? Let's fill all the...
That's the way I look at it.
And then you got an opportunity for advance, but you've got the folks that interviewed with us the other night that could potentially
They could potentially fill the shoes.
So...
Because I'll tell you, we had, we do have a good crew, because it's tough to pick from these guys, you know? The good thing is scoring and everything is the way it is, because we got really good candidates.
Tell you what, we have overall pretty good, because I do not get one complaint, whether it's a call or in person, about any city employees in any department. So evidently, everybody's doing what needs to be done, you know? And if you can reward them in some way, promotion or something, then I think we should do that, I agree with you.
We usually have pizza on Fridays. Pizza Fridays, happy old Thursdays.
Yeah, look at that, pizza on the table, yeah.
A little bit of thanks goes a long way, or a
Oh, yeah.
A good job, and I know everybody that works for the city, you know, people say, well, they get paid, that should be thanks enough. You know, they work above and beyond their duty, almost everybody from inside of here, down to the garage, to everybody. I just want to say, great job, everybody, because you guys actually make our job easy. And without that, it'd be a lot tougher, so thank you.
Well, call for a motion that we approve the process, do we get, get a motion?
We have a motion, please give us a vote on it.
Okay, so all we need is a vote, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Number five, Access Agreement Amendment between United Tacit and the city of Evolus regarding 4th of July fireworks display. Is that, didn't we have one last year, or is this just every year, Jackie, or they change it? That all?
It's standard, right?
It's correct, yeah.
No one has any questions, I'll call for a motion that we approve this access agreement?
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, we have a support?
Support.
Word by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Number six, Consider Accepting Quotations for 2021 Curb Sidewalk and Pavement. Jerry, you got anything to add?
Uh, only that 3D concrete came in with a loss bid, so I do recommend 3D for the 2021 season.
They came in, you know, I was trying to read some of this, because if you don't really understand the linear and this, but I could understand these bids pretty good, they came in considerably low, you know, compared to our other bid. So, and I'm glad CNC Winger bid, because I like to have at least two or three people bidding. So I'll make a motion that we take 3D, because they beat the other one by a lot.
Well, Winger's done good work for the city.
Oh, he's done great work for the city.
Can you make that into form of a motion?
I'll make that as a motion.
Okay, do we have a support?
Support.
Thanks too.
Motion made by Coivinon, support by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number seven, Resignation of Sammy Spurling, EMT. Call for a motion that we accept the resignation of Sammy Spurling and send her a letter of thanks for her time on the service?
So moved.
Motion made by Coivinon, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Word by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number eight, Amendment to Exclusive Listing Agreement with SBN Northco Real Estate Services. Jackie, what are we amending there?
Yeah, this is just an extension to the real estate place. And the first item number eight is from Station 44, Mainway 37, property across the service master. The next one will be the industrial park drive property, which is a former neighborhood, Strong's, the name, Carol.
Okay, got a plot there. No one has any questions, a call for a motion that we approve this amendment to the listing agreement?
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, we have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item nine, Amendment to Exclusive Listing Agreement with SBN Northco Real Estate Services. That is for industrial park drive property. No one has any questions, a call for a motion that we approve this amended listing?
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, we have a support?
Support.
Word by Coivinon, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number 10, Request from Crowe Sanderson to Use City Parking Lot on Industrial Park Drive. I thought we approved that.
You said it was only 30 days.
Oh, that long ago already?
Yeah. Uh, no, we didn't have the 30 days, because Alan and I were going to try to work on some deals and hopefully hit that number room.
Mm-hmm.
And as it turns out, Crowe Sanderson isn't using that parking lot that often. But they do want to continue to use it, and Alan and I are working with Pat Geller on whether we can find some collaboration between us and them to remove that.
Oh, okay. If no one has any questions, call for a motion that we approve the request for Crowe Sanderson to use the city parking lot?
Both.
Motion made by Purpich, you have a support?
Support.
Word by Coivinon, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. And item number 11, I know we've been talking about, Brian brought janitorial services, how we should approach that, because it's kind of a needed position and a service?
Yeah, I guess, I'm sure we're all aware that our last janitorial service is no longer working for us. And so currently, we don't have the professional service rendered at, at the moment. I know we've been trying to make do with city workers, you know, coming up from city garage from time to time to do what they can. But I guess my fear is that as we get into the summer season here now, the availability of staff from Public Works is probably going to be limited, you know? We're going to be, they're going to be busy on the golf course and mowing grass and a thousand other things. So I guess, I was hoping we'd kind of get off dead center and make some determination where we want to go with the janitor's position. You know, I know we've been discussing this for a couple of years. I'm hoping to see some movement, one way or the other, I guess, in the near future, what direction we want to take with that. And then in the interim, because I know this is going to take us some time, in the interim, I'm hoping that the council will consider to, you know, going out and finding another professional service that can provide those services while we, you know, put the finishing touches on what, what we're going to do. That's the reason I wanted to bring that up.
Well, we got a lot of buildings all over the place, you know, auditorium, library, and probably can end up with a few more buildings down the road. So we can have, correct me if I'm wrong, will approve creating a position for a janitor? And hiring a contract service until we fill that position?
Well, I guess, you know, my whole intent here was to just bring it up for discussion, to open a dialogue among the council. You know, I didn't expect an end result, but an end result would be great, I guess.
Well, I don't, I don't know if we have to approve the janitorial service, I think that's something that department heads can do, because, you know, you hate to have the police doing that and pulling guys out of the public works, because you see, it's going to get busy.
How about, would we, would summer come and, and I don't know, because I don't know how the, how this works, but would we hire casual labors, could we hire somebody like that to do the work around here until we figure out what we're going to do?
If you have enough casual workers, that's been getting tougher and tougher to get kids, or, or even a help casuals and all these, it's almost impossible. We can't get them for recycling or anything anymore, so. And we do get a few students, the last few years, we've got a few students, and they, they've spent most of their summer months, just because there is a whole bunch of people.
Do you have any suggestions about getting somebody for here?
For temporary?
Well, just for temporary, because I don't know how many hours a week we want to, but we used to talk about this for a while, and I think we were at about 20 hours a week. Because, you know, you've got your guys down there that need to stay down there. And if we get somebody for at least 20 hours a week, and they clean here, the library, the auditorium, and we still have time, maybe they can help you out, but I, I don't know, we're just kind of, we're new at this, so we're going at it to the best way to do it.
Yeah, like I say, I mean, five years ago, it would have been no problem getting somebody, but the last couple of years, I, I can't get anybody. To be honest.
Is it that hard to get summer help?
Even, even students.
Yeah, it's, it's tough.
I think it's the boss, myself.
Yeah.
They don't want to work for that sleeve.
As much grass, there, there are molten trees, they're asking for them to move. They say it's harder, so. No, I don't.
Well, you know, the thing is,
Obviously getting harder and harder.
Unless you love cutting grass, you have to look at, you start down at the cemetery, by the time you finish cutting it and weed whacking it, you start over again. So it's like Groundhog Day.
There's about six weeks, so it's a continuous cycle.
And you try not to hit the headstones and everything else, I can see why people get a little nervous.
When you, I don't know, you're talking 20 hours a week for the library here, the auditorium, I don't know, not so much to hit, because it just holds down here now, but I mean, that's a lot.
I think that's a bad name deal.
Yeah.
I think that if there's a need, we should address it.
But I think that's why...
If there's a bad heart need, and we can get the janitor.
And I think that's why council was brought to show, so we can discuss it, because we need something. Yes, we do.
South pack stuff, sure, if that works.
One consideration with regard to the, you know, the casual suggestion, probably a good suggestion, but I think we might be better served with professional service, because they come insured and, you know, this is what they do for a living, so they're going to be more efficient at it, they're going to know what we want.
A shell shocker, and maybe Jackie would know this, do you remember how much our other cleaning service charged us? Was it like 10 grand a month?
Oh, you mean some years ago? Oh, wow. No, no, not that much.
Okay. Because that one, and actually, they didn't do a bad job, but towards the end there, it wasn't so good. You know, when we come up here and, you know, we're leaving papers from two, you know, two weeks ago, and they haven't cleaned, you know, the garbage is weren't empty, but they're charging us for it, so we, we would need somebody good.
Yeah, I, I know myself in a situation where I was working, they had a tough time finding people to come in and work. These cleaning services.
Yeah.
They're, they're struggling too.
They are.
It's hard to find someone that, you know? Yeah, boy, I never would have thought that you can't get kids to work in the summertime.
You know, Johnny...
They have to be, they have to be, they're eighteen, sixteen.
You know, at $15 an hour, people don't even want to work for it.
This is very, very...
We go back to, well, we were working for $2.10 an hour, we thought that was big money.
Well, who takes care of the park, the, in the park? We do?
Yeah. Well, what the...
Our manager bowls.
You got a manager.
Yeah.
We, a kid's trainer.
Send the crew up there down there.
What do you do now, you just send somebody from Public Works who does the cleaning?
Uh, for grass mowing and stuff, usually the students will do that in summer, they'll, they'll go out there, they'll do all the training and everything. But any work out at the park, yeah, our, our crew, we take care of everything else.
But the janitorial, you just take somebody from the crew and have them empty the garbage and all that kind of stuff?
Um, not just like in the bathrooms and stuff, the manager takes care of all that, he cleans the bathrooms.
Yeah, I mean, about the city hall and stuff.
For hall.
Yeah, I don't care about that.
I've been doing it a little bit, and some of the guys on our crew, if we get somebody available, they come up here for an hour and try to get through with them.
Is it a pain in the butt, or can you do it for a couple more weeks until we can figure something out?
I think we can handle it for a couple more weeks, I mean, somebody will do it.
You won't run out of toilet paper.
Yeah, I mean.
Support. Well, you might if you open up a bit, open up the number 12 here. So we just go on. But, okay, what do we, what is our plan to?
Well, what, yeah, now I lost my train of thought.
Well, first of all, we got to get somebody to do it, left explorer, professional help? Because what if you hire another city employee, and that's what they did, he's the lone man on a totem pole, like anything else? Bid your way up, you know, and you get an opening?
If I could make a suggestion, would it be prudent to have the Personnel Committee meet with Jerry and Jackie?
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, it's...
You know, we can get off dead center and get moving in that direction and kind of be able to do it in a little bit shorter order that way. I think the committee did it.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't think that's such a great idea.
Okay, that's a good idea. Son of a, beat me right in the butt.
Boy, did you pull him into that one.
Oh, did you hook the light and sinker me?
It was a great idea until you saw your name on it.
Forgot it was on that one.
Well, should we see if we can get some service to come in? I know, you see, they're struggling too, they're always looking for people. And then we'll have to set up a meeting.
That'd be great.
Kind of figure something out here, which way to go.
Appreciate the consideration.
Well, I see, we've been kicking that can down the road for a couple of years. So we'll do, we'll do that, Jackie, you and Jerry can kind of figure out if we can find somebody. Then we'll have a meeting with Personnel Committee on how we should address this for the long run. Item 12, Open City Buildings. I know I've been getting a few emails and stuff.
Yeah, I think there's probably a number of people that are wondering, you know, just when the city's going to start reopening the buildings for the public. So I guess I want to have a discussion at council level where, find out where everybody's heads at, you know, with regard to the prudence of opening or, or not opening, or, you know? I guess from my view, City Hall especially is probably maybe a little bit safer for the staff and so forth. Because of the enclosed areas that we have.
Yeah, you can restrict the movement to just certain areas there, because there's not a lot of things for somebody to do here.
Yeah. So, yeah, I just wanted to have a conversation at council level, and then I imagine we would have to go on the recommendation of the emergency manager, is that our ultimate goal, or? I guess I'm not real certain, I've never been through a pandemic before, so I guess.
It's, uh, opening a bit of buildings, and Mommy and I said it's the library, for a lot of the people, and we were discussing it earlier. Is the librarian, uh, the one that's not keen on having people in the library?
Are any libraries open?
Yeobert is open.
Yeobert is?
I take my wife over there every once in a while.
Because even if you open a building up for half a day too, you know what I mean?
Yeah, take baby steps at it.
Yeah, but the library, see, I don't know, I don't...
You can, you can call in for a book, and they'll have it outside for you. She puts it in a bag, gives you a rice misty treat.
They do that up here, don't they?
Yeah.
Okay.
At our, at our library.
Yeah.
Well, even like, even like for City Hall, you know, we don't have to be open at 8:00 in the morning till 4:00 to start off with. And if somebody has something they have to do, maybe we should open up just for a couple hours and set the time, and then gradually get into opening all day, but...
Well, if you put it open, let's say for four hours, then you got no more than so many people at a time. Just like they got at some of these banks and stuff, and you go in, and you just wait till somebody leaves, and then you can go in, you know?
I'm sure that there's probably some sort of guidelines out there for inside stuff where if they comply, why not open if they comply? Where social distancing, whatever it takes, but if you can, why not?
Because it's, it's a little difficult if somebody comes, wants to cast a sign, some papers or something, and I see some, you know, steps out there, things like that, or counting money out there. But I mean, maybe it's, it's the weather, inclement weather, things like that, they can just come in, do their business, because we're pretty well secured around there, every office has got a door, and you got the...
I hate to think that you have to make an appointment, but maybe that, that would need answering if you called in and made an appointment, but that, you know, that involves having a secretary take all these calls, and I don't think that's right either.
And I know, I mean, you got various issues that might crop up, if you got an issue with your water bill, or...
Yeah.
You want to speak to a person face to face about certain things, you know?
At least have it explained to you, because the way it looks on, on your bill, on your paper, might not be like this other person sees, or you don't understand the paper, and it's hard to explain sometimes.
Yeah.
Especially these, you know, some older people, you know?
I think it's a pretty inconvenient for the public, and hard on the staff.
I, that's, that's kind of what I'm looking at too.
The sooner we can get back to the way things were close to being, it will be a much happier place. And if you want to do it slow, or whatever it's like you do, by the recommended rules and guidelines, then I'm 100% behind you.
Well, like you say, if you open 9:00 till noon, and no more than two at a time?
Whatever it takes.
Something like that, you know, that's just a suggestion.
Open to open.
So I'm wondering if it would be prudent to, you know, just give the council's blessing to the department heads to visit that issue, and, you know, each department head is where, where their building or their workspace, or the peculiar, I hate to say peculiarities, but the, the differences in the work areas. And so they ultimately, in consult with, I'm sure, our emergency manager, you know, once we real, or make sure that this is something that we should do, you know, let them know that we're in support of opening as soon as... know that we're in support of opening as soon as possible and let them determine.
It might be an idea to get with the library staff and.
Yep, she heard somebody.
Get with, get with her and say, you know, we, we really like to open up the, you know, what can we do to make you safe? To allow people to come in and, you know. I know they, you probably can't work on puzzles over there in the corner like they always do, but a lot of people come and read a paper.
And you gotta sign their exhumation, that's it, you know what I mean, at a time. But research that.
With two hour time limit.
Yeah, I think in research, and like maybe for City Hall is whenever you decide or whatever you wanna do is, you know, maybe stay open and to, you know, let, and I just throw this out there, like ten to one, ten to two, because you ought to give the, the twelve to one, because a lot of people work and they get lunch. Since they can't come after work, a lot of them, a lot of people will come during their lunch hour if they have a problem with anybody, so maybe it'd be nice to give them the opportunity to do that, more or less like you said, if they call you.
Yeah, maybe they'll determine that they can just be safe opening for the entire day, like, you know. At least they'll be able to make the call that way, you know, the, the department head.
Is there any point in seeing how other communities do it?
Well, I, I guess you do some, you know, what is everybody else doing? I don't even know.
We don't have to reinvent the wheel. It's already offered meetings at all.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure that we would be prudent to continue on requiring mask wearing.
It's also a risk to saying hand sanitizer. Building open yet?
No. And how do you do it in police departments? If you, sooner or later, you gotta let somebody in for something, right?
If somebody comes with a fingerprint, we bring in their fingerprint. They need to be able to break, we bring them in anyways, so.
So.
We don't really have a whole lot of options down there, so. We have a suspect that we're very, 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 so. They're really close. Doors locked, if you knock, you're called.
Well, I'm gonna leave that up to our staff here, some recommendations and maybe if we hear something too from somebody, 'cause I, I really haven't looked into it. I don't know what the other towns are doing.
Yeah, I think it's.
They're looking at trying to do something, but I don't know what.
Hit and miss, I think.
Yeah.
Each community is probably a little different than the next. But it, um, just to refresh my memory, was it, when this started over a year ago, did we actually vote to close the government buildings, or was that something that the emergency manager recommended? I don't remember, to tell you the truth.
I don't either.
I, I would assume we don't, maybe Mitch, you recall, I don't know. Hate to put you on the spot, test your memory, but I don't know that we would need a motion to, uh, approve the opening of the buildings, would we?
I don't, I don't really think so.
Not until we get the recommendations.
They get a plan and.
Then, then adopt the plan.
Yeah, we could have a good, quick workshop too, you know, this is what works and then that's what we'll do it. You know, and see how it works.
I'll feel some other communities out, 'cause I got a couple mayors that are gonna be there, so I'll find out what they're doing.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, just ask them, you know, we don't, you know, we're kind of in limbo here. We'd like to get open, but.
Well, like John said, don't reinvent the wheel. Maybe somebody's already doing something.
More than one piece of paper came across my desk and it had some white on it with Edith placed at the top again.
Well, any, any more discussion on that subject? We'll maybe take that avenue.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the council's consideration.
That's good you brought, brought that up, 'cause people have been asking, especially the janitorial position too. I know we've been talking about that for a couple of years. Anybody have any, uh, committee reports or board or discussions?
There was a, we had a fire consolidation meeting.
Oh, you did?
Yes, yes, we did. And when the, the, uh, Joint Powers for Information and stuff. And a lot of, I believe, progress was made. It was various, it actually ran over the, the two hours. There were some changes made and I, I, as far as how the meeting will be, will be run and stuff that had a little bit more local, you know, a little bit more control, a little bit more organization. It's getting to the point where hopefully, within the next couple of months, that there'll be some information available for the public, uh, here trying to decide. And I know it's, it's, it's a minor part, but it's a big thing for us to get continuity, is that they're, they're in the process of selecting a name for the department and stuff like that, which is, is, is a minor thing in some aspects.
It's a milestone.
But, but in overall, public and, and bringing the groups together, it's sort of a big thing. So, and that got accomplished, but things are, were moving along a, a lot better than, than they had, I think, in the past. We had a little bit of a smaller group, but, uh, it, it made me feel better about the whole process. It did. So, and then we have another meeting for the, for Monday, I think, next week, if I recall, and everything's going out on, they're, they're, uh, submitting some stuff to the lawyer so he can use up the grant money that we had before it becomes expired shortly. So everything, you know, that we've been awarded so far has been properly used and, and being used up, so it's not going back or being wasted, so.
Absolutely.
Everything is going, is going pretty good, I think.
That's a good report.
Yes, it was. I was very happy to give it.
I missed it because of my granddaughter's sixth birthday. You gotta have priorities.
Yes, you do.
Oh, my God.
She said we're gonna have it once.
Yeah.
And H R A was canceled due to agenda, but things are running very, very nicely. If you don't need to, I do, you know.
I guess Lincoln Place, they're all full up there now.
Are they?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, everything is, uh, leased out, so.
I gotta, maybe I'm, I'm not in the right spot here, but, uh, having gone around and you're talking about the, the housing up by the water tanks, is that what you were just talking about? Okay, what is, what is the apartment building status over in West Alba? Who, is that owned by somebody out there?
Private ownership. I see, uh, some of the buildings are starting to look pretty decent.
I go by there almost every day, check the progress.
Yeah, I was out there looking at them the other day.
Sorry, this is the wrong place, but there's one that's really, really messed up there.
Jackie, is that the one that's supposed to be demoed or?
Yeah, there's a couple of fires that I still go to the rest of the one. They're, they're, they're worth some effort.
They're out there every day. I go, I take a swing through almost every day. They're out there working and they're putting siding on the windows.
Looked a lot better than the last time I was there.
I was surprised. If I wasn't, they'd tell you. Sorry if I overstepped there. No, you did, you did not. You did not. You did not overstep.
I didn't know if those were city owned or?
No, that's private.
Private. Yeah, there's that fire, that one real bad one up there. It's probably should go down.
Years that talks them up pretty good, but they had that, you know, just about completely rehabbed when I went by. It's, uh, they're really coming along.
Yeah, I was surprised to see actually how good they're starting to look. I'd have never expected anybody to put that kind of money in them, you know.
And they got all sorts of stuff all over the place and you don't let, they got that much stuff to finish laying there, in my opinion.
Your professional contracting opinion.
Yes, yes. I need three nails to make one go in.
Well, we, we attended a airport commission meeting. I know, Chief, you were out there. Jackie, you were there too, weren't you? Yeah. And we came up, uh, the commission, we don't wanna get tied down with sinking a lot of money in it, so we're gonna have a group, three people from the, who were there at the meeting, and get together with the commission and find a way to maybe make that place, get an operator or something where it can generate enough income to support itself.
You're talking about sea plane base?
Sea plane base, yeah. And there are some issues, 'cause, you know, everybody's talking a hundred miles an hour, 'cause I guess the rumor was, uh, before, the reason we had so many people, that, uh, we're shutting it down. Well, that was not the tent of the meeting. So you see how, how that gets everybody rattled up, but you don't, you don't have the use like you had many years ago, but I think if you get the right operator years ago, we can maybe, uh, turn some revenue there, because it's, obviously, things are kind of run down on the buildings and stuff, and I hard to justify sinking a lot of money that you could do somewhere else, 'cause we've got the regular airport. And if you want government assistance, there are certain things you have to do there and but that, that's kind of where we're at there, so.
Yeah, I would just commend the efforts of the group. You folks are, uh, turning things around here is a much more professional way to manage things than I've seen in the past and it's an excellent, excellent way to proceed from my view, you know. And that kind of puts the squelch on some of the rumors that are out there. Rumors are rumors, but if you handle things professionally and, and, uh, you stick with the program, uh, we're gonna be that much better for it, so congratulations on that.
Well, you had a good operator out there years ago and he drew business in from all over the place. I mean, that was really busy. And you get somebody who's ambitious and good, I, I, I think they could do okay there, you know. As long as it, uh, maybe kind of pay its own way or close to it. 'Cause they say there's buildings that we work and things like everything, you know, we all got a laundry list of our own stuff, so does the city of Virginia, and that's kind of not at the top.
And you know, it's like a ship. If you have a nice port that you can go to, you're gonna start using that port instead of having to go fifty miles here, a hundred miles there, which is nothing. I don't feel you blame guys. That hundred mile hop stuff, it still boggles my mind. But that area there could, who knows how it could foster any, with proper direction as far as busyness and, you know. And then once it starts paying for itself, who knows what else it could pay for?
You know, like I say, it's, uh, the, the per capita benefit is a lot less there than if you had your playgrounds, hippodrome, things like that in all the towns. So, you know, you gotta scrutinize that one a little more.
Let's fly up there with, uh, for the weekend. You know, I gotta, we'll stay at the sea bases, buy a whole lot of stuff, ten years, who knows?
There used to be Canadian customers who'd bring their planes down there. That place used to be packed. Remember, Brian? You could hardly drive through there.
It's a nice spot. It's wide open. I don't see why it isn't.
And I think if you closed it, the odds of opening it up again, I think, would never happen.
Enough closing already.
And there's, what, a hundred pontoon boats on that lake? Could have a, one of the, one of the people are brought up, a place for them to fuel instead of carrying gas cans down.
We could make it just a wonderful.
You know, there's, there's a lot of pluses to having it there, for the aircraft and just for the residents on that lake.
If it didn't freeze up there, it'd be seven, uh, for seven months a year, you'd be like being in Florida. Seven months a place though.
Well, that, that's all I've got. Brian, do you have anything else?
No, I think I've, oh, I'll change my welcome.
Jim, you got anything else? Johnny?
No, I'm done.
Joe?
No, I'm good.
And I really don't have, uh, I think we covered everything, uh, that I would like to see covered. Jackie, you got anything? Steph? Jerry?
Uh, just a few things, Mayor. Um, one is Monday, we're starting our alley cleanup, uh, spring cleanup. It'll be open from seven to six o'clock for the two weeks. Bring their stuff down, we'll see what happens. Um, and then the second one, you might have saw some action on Garfield Street recently. Uh, that's Minnesota Energy. They're moving some lines and putting some bigger lines in across a few of the streets anticipating the start of the construction on Garfield and, uh, Ellen and I met with our contractor, Mike. And, uh, they're pretty eager to get Mike, we might see them towards the end of the week, cutting some trees, the bigger trees that they have to take down. And then they'll most likely, right after road restriction, hopefully around, uh, May, beginning of May, they'll be in town and they're gonna start on the four hundred block at one thirty up. It was a, it's a big project.
It is a really big one. I think that's the last, uh, street we have that hasn't had a reconstruct, isn't it?
Uh, there's a few other ones, but, yeah, this is one of the bigger ones. Never was in need of two of them. The utilities are all hundred fifteen to hundred twenty years old. We got our use out of them.
Well, sooner or later, you gotta bite the bullet and do it. Mitch, you got anything to add?
No, Mayor, call for mine.
No good news even?
No.
Chief, you got anything?
No, Ken, sir.
Ellen?
Just, uh, kinda equator here. Jerry said, um, yeah, Mike's supposed to know about the equal air. And like I said, later this week, we'll probably see them there, uh, start clear removal and activity will pick up from there in the coming weeks.
Well, that's good, 'cause we've been talking about that for a few years now. Uh, anybody from the audience? If not, I will adjourn the meeting. That's a long one tonight.